All right.
Very sorry.
You guys ready?
Wait, John can't uh.
Oh, you tell me why.
Oh, he's muted.
Not me.
Okay. Elaine, can I just sit down here?
Gosh, no, I'm not that.
Microphone in the bottom corner on his.
Yeah, you can see the.
I don't know how we'll pass them around. That's the only thing.
Assistance coming in.
Well, I'm sorry, I I don't know.
It's technical.
Well, that's all right. No, no, no. No, I have to do this because my husband has issues, right? Don't worry about it. I'm fine. I'm fine. No, no, I'm fine. To have one of those.
Oh, you bet.
I'm fine. Seriously.
Yeah, I see it.
Do we have a Wi-Fi?
So um. You can't undo this.
Julie would know.
No, because I didn't do that to him.
Oh.
Oh, he needs technical assistance.
Can you hear us?
From Chris.
Actually, let me actually let me try this. Sub.
She quit.
Bingo. We're on. I moved the mouse and I lost everybody. I need Jimmy here.
No, he's.
Yeah.
Just wrecked the town hall.
Oh, okay. And so when I leave, do I have to do it? No, close. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Where's the speaker? Right here.
Wait, wait a minute.
All right.
Suspend it for a minute where where we can.
How you doing, Al? Be careful. Everybody ready?
Yep.
I'm not. Elaine, you're working on it?
I'm just trying to get it. You can proceed. I'm just trying to open it.
All right. September 12th, 2022, in St. Roxbury, Connecticut. I'd like to call to order the Roxbury zoning commission meeting for tonight and seat our members. Tonight, we have Lizzy, Elaine Curly, Jim Tesser, Ellen Johnson, Jim Conley, and myself, Phil Hargreaves. And that's oh, that's that's all our regular members.
All regulars, yeah.
And tonight, uh, Cheryl Rosen and Chris Hagerty are our alternates. They're here. So we're seated. First item, we all seated properly?
Yes.
Yeah.
Tonight, first agenda item is the approval of minutes of the public hearing of two months ago.
July, yep. We can't remember that far back.
I didn't see any corrections. There was any corrections there?
Are we looking at the public hearing minutes first?
Yeah, do public hearing first.
Yeah.
No, I didn't see any. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
No second?
No, no second.
In favor? Aye, aye, aye. All right, minutes of the public hearing approved. Now, the minutes of our regular meeting of two months ago, July 11th, 2022. I had one correction on the second page on a review of historic district commissions request. Uh, right in the middle of that first paragraph. Uh, after Jim's questioning why the commission should be considered further changes. It said, what question? Why the commission? I don't know what that was a typo.
It should be he, he.
Oh, he question?
Yeah, yeah. I I had that one marked, actually.
All right.
There is one more in the second to the last paragraph, another typo.
On the second page?
Same page, yeah.
Second to the last paragraph?
Yeah.
What is that?
In the last sentence, the word two should be uh, we should strike that. We don't need it.
Yeah, let owners know.
Yeah, so that those are the only ones I knew of.
All right. Any other obvious questions? So the minutes for our meeting. Motion?
Motion to approve minutes.
Motion second?
Elaine, no second.
No seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, regular meeting, July 11th. Minutes are approved. All right, next, public comment. I don't know of any public comments. Are any public comment? Nothing was scheduled?
No.
Right, so there's no public comment. John, zoning, we're a zoning enforcement officer?
Yes, hello everyone. John Coney. Um, wish I was there, but you're probably glad I'm not. I'm in dire need of a shower. So what we have going on right now is basically our permits are going status quo. We still have pools coming in, generators, sheds, and a couple of additions going on. Uh, ironically, at the end of last week, we had two people come in with new construction, brand new houses going in. Uh, one of them, they both have to go through wetlands as of now, but they seem pretty well prepared and they're getting the ball rolling. One's on Berry Road, one on Carriage Lane, and there's also another one on East, East Farm, East Flag. Um, he just asked me about some tree cutting, if you could do that to prepare for his, so. In the near future, we should have two, definitely two, probably three more new houses coming in, which ironically is kind of strange. It should be slowing down. Uh, on another front, I had two issues to contend with. One was on Two River Road about an um, a garden feature, I would call it. It was a block and mortar with brick wall, approximately thirteen to fifteen feet long, about seven foot, eight feet tall. Uh, Bill and I looked at this quite extensively, um, every possible angle, and we determined that if there's no way we could approve it, um, it's a structure within the setback, so we sent it to ZBA. It took ZBA a while, but after two months, they came back with the conclusion that it's called a fence. So in order for them to get that fence erected and to keep it up, they had to meet our height regulations, so they agreed to knock it down to six feet. So if you're coming down Weller's Bridge and you'll see a big white fence, it looks like a stone wall, call it a fence. Uh, the second thing was the land trust. Uh, I got an email from someone about the land trust selling tickets on the town property and on their property doing um, commercial activity. Uh, I started thinking back to when we had the concert on Moose Horn, and they were selling tickets on private property, basically a commercial enterprise for a one-day event. And uh, the quickest solution that I could think of was to do the donation aspect that we did last time. I approached the land trust, Anne, Anne was very receptive of that idea. They changed it. And so right now, we're looking at it as a donation-based activity, so it's it's not really the commercial endeavor that we were thinking the concert was gonna be. Looking into that aspect, uh, I started poking around. I found some great stuff that I gave to Patrick to look at, and we'll sift through a little bit further. Is um, and please, if you have input, please e- email me on this. Thinking of um, almost like an administrative permit for special events. Whereas the firemen, the land trust, anyone that does a special event that sells tickets, raises money, we could have the selectman's officer, however this may be determined, uh, ordinance regulation or a special permit type thing through uh, via the first selectman's office, we can approve that. In that application that I've got two different things I'm kind of compiling, put it together. It's really good because we can get into concessions, uh, food vendors, it would include the fire marshal if need be for tents, say a wedding. And we had tents that need to be checked up by building department. Everything would be incorporated in one form, and it would just be an administrative yes or no, determined by whoever. Um, besides that, it's been pretty busy, especially those two things, and uh, that's about it. So if anyone has any questions, feel free to ask.
Any questions, John?
So the form um, would give you uh, something in writing from anyone who's going to do any kind of uh, social event in that in that format. So it gives you like a heads up in a way, because sometimes things happen, you don't even know they're happening.
Exactly. It's just more of an accountability, um, large events, per se, there may be a police involvement for um, traffic. If we if we get a heads up, like this is coming our way, we can be prepared and check the boxes, like a tents for fire marshal, building inspections. Um, just really generic and really basic, just check the box if this applies to you type thing.
It's a great idea.
John, I got a question. In the past, I thought nonprofits, like the church or the Boy Scouts, they've always sold tickets for their barbecues.
Yeah, but again, Jim, if you look at our regulations, if it's not written, it's not approved, it can't happen. So looking at it from that vantage point and trying to mirror that, so we can encompass everything instead of splitting things up. I mean, again, it would just for for churches, nonprofits, it would be a rubber stamp, just like they always have. But now we'd have something to, you know, pay attention.
Oh, I understand. I was just getting to a nonprofit trying to raise money, and if they're calling it donations, then people can eat for free and not donate.
Uh, well, that's, you know, they could say minimum donation. I mean, that's that's an easy way out. Otherwise, we're running nonprofits or running commercial enterprises on town property or on different property, which isn't permissible. I mean, it it's it doesn't fall into a home enterprise aspect. It's a commercial entity.
You're talking about free motors, right?
Well, if we ask for donation instead of selling a ticket for ten bucks. I mean, the Boy Scouts use, they don't do their barbecue anymore, but we used to go out and sell tickets.
Right.
All the high school sports, we sell tickets to the hockey game. They sell tickets to the basketball game. We're nonprofits. Uh, we don't ask for donations. We actually sell a ticket.
And and by doing that, you just fill out this form and you'd be good to go. There's no.
But I mean, I'm getting, I'm talking about the difference between donation and buying a ticket.
Right. So it's a change in the language.
Want to permit the, I don't see, I mean, are we looking for? The what I see is you're raising money and it's a commercial activity on private land or on town land. All we're doing is trying to find accountability and uh, there.
I remember Mark Wager, yes, he was, he was on his land selling tickets. He was putting the money in his pocket.
Correct.
Okay, this is, it seems to me, a little different.
Uh, Elliot's Elliot's private practice there. Same thing. Everyone would fall into the same form.
So then, when we allowed Mark to do it at Munson Meadow, we suggested that he tax on the rec commission. And all of, some of the funds went to the rec commission, which was a nonprofit on town property, and they were still selling tickets.
Correct. Uh, so I don't see what the issue is. The issue is because a nonprofit would have to fill out a form?
No.
No, it's but.
Donation, the term donation.
Donation or.
Okay, so on the form, it would say tickets for sale. I mean, this is, this is open for discussion. I gave it to Patrick to look at. I'm just looking for.
I'm just thinking.
Accountability.
You're asking for a donation, there's gonna be some people that aren't gonna donate.
Uh, it's because you brought up.
Maybe they should have came and clarified that was zoned before they they scheduled everything. So we would have the proper, so we would have this conversation prior to this being publicized as opposed to post.
I was just.
I didn't look. It was emailed to me, so I'm looking.
Yeah, a nonprofits trying to raise funds. And all of nonprofits, in the past, we've always sold tickets.
And this, I got an email on this, so I had to address it. I did the best that I could, but it's something that needs to be discussed with Patrick.
We could talk about.
I gave it to him.
It's in our regulations.
It's, yeah, it's different than Mark Wager. He's private resident.
But we can look and see how it's written.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's not a permitted activity, it's not permitted. And I'd look through the home, it's not a home enterprise, doesn't fall anywhere. It's not in zone D.
So what is the solution that I came up with?
It was a simple form to fill out, which.
And the church, congressional church beef barbecue.
Correct. Yes, all those. Yeah, why not?
So what do we do with that? So it's like, we would say minimum donation?
No, no, they could put down tickets for sale. It's just basically a check form that if you're going to.
Thought that was a go around.
Function, you just let us know in advance, and we can get the proper approvals for you. It it's not about tickets or donations or the price of admission. It's about accountability. What are you going to do there? Are you going to have circus rides? Are you going to have?
Yeah, no, I I think we're fine with the form.
Yeah, I don't mind.
The form is fine. It was more about, because um, I think this came up because the land tru- the land trust was selling tickets, and it should be a donation, and we're just trying to make sure we understand like why the the church should have to call it now a donation and not a ticket.
You thought that the donation part was a go, would be a possible go around?
Yeah, that's what we did last.
Not be regulated activity, right?
Exactly, because we don't have anything in our regulations, at least that I could find, that says you can have one-day commercial activities to raise funds, donations or ticket sales. So we went, I went back to the easy out saying donations, we can get away with it. We've done it before. We could do this in the meantime until we do have a resolution. And I thought the form would be a great idea so that we have accountability and we can know what's going on across from zone D to everywhere.
No, the form, the form would then be a way that he just administratively or or the selectman administratively approve it, and you can call it selling tickets.
Sure, and whatever you want to do, you know.
But if the land trust can't call it selling tickets.
They can.
No, they can.
As long as you can sell tickets, I'm good.
For the selling tickets.
Right, but where he's saying, if we have this form, you can either opt for selling tickets or making it a donation, whichever you prefer.
And he'll know upfront what it's about.
I have a question, John.
A lot of people will not donate and will just come in.
Right.
Excuse me, sorry. Uh, John, you used the word administrative. So what you're planning be- because of our regulations would be for the sole purpose of administrative applications throughout the town.
Yeah, well, that's that has yet to be hammered out, so which direction we want to go. Originally, I was thinking maybe like a town ordinance, um, slip it in there, but the more we thought about it, it doesn't really fit with a town ordinance, because it's not really a um, a statute or a law that we're trying to do. Then I was thinking along the permits of um, renting the town pavilion. Where are the town pavilion? You have to show proof of insurance, stuff like that, so it kind of mirrors that. Or, you know, if it just determine that Patrick doesn't want to touch, and maybe the zoning commission would like to handle that. They could go that avenue, but right now, believe this, just came up ten days ago, something like that, because I talked to Anne, I talked to John Smoglia. Um, and so they understood the position of the donation, and John actually told me about that. You know, again, if they came to us earlier, as opposed to me being informed via email, we certainly could have worked out something quicker or more fruitful, as opposed to ten days in advance or two weeks in advance.
Well, I've I've, I'd like to comment, minimum donation is not gonna work, because then you're asking for payment.
Well, what's going on with?
Same as a ticket, so minimum don.
That event is Sunday, the 18th.
Right.
Um, so whatever. I mean, it it's up to you guys. If you guys want to put something out there and say, charge tickets for a commercial event, feel free. I'll, I'll tell John, he can do that. Uh, sure.
Well, I think you guys have worked it out.
Yeah, I did. I I mean, I talked to Anne, I talked to John. Oh. Very helpful with the form. She sent me one from Newtown, which was fantastic, because they, she does that in other towns, so she does it already. It pretty much makes sense that we could pick up the same ball and run with it. Uh, that's where we stand now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. I have a question for John.
Sure, sure, I'm here.
Thanks, John. Free to go.
Free to, no, free to shower. Oh, my goodness.
You lucky guy, you.
It's it's a long day today.
You got a good sunburn.
Yeah, oh my God. I was doing all those, the drought had me running like crazy, and we got rain. I gotta catch up from all the other work. Not easy. Give him those. Give him those with the weather will do it, dude.
All right, on to the next agenda item. Karen, Julie, okay if I flip-flop the PA 20 with 29 for zone A first?
Absolutely.
Because zone A.
You are the boss.
Should be pleasant, shouldn't take very long to go over. And Julie, now we can have that secret map.
Yeah, you can. Should I flip it over?
You can flip that over, sure. Who do you want?
I think, well, we should pull out the ones that we got.
Thank you, Elaine. You want?
We can get this on the screen.
I know, but it's funny to see it.
Paper.
It's like paper.
This is, this is a very good map. That's good. That one, Julie. That's a very good map. The whole story.
Oh, I'm in front of it.
See it?
You can need my glass?
I mean, I do, but I can see it on.
Explain.
Yes, it is. Pretty tight with these big chairs.
Hi, Simi. Hi.
All right, that's a very important little triangle right there. Um, as a couple of meetings, or Chris, you brought up restrictive. And the reason that uh, this thing has been floating around for how many years? Several years, uh, because a long time ago, I think at a P O C D meeting, it came up different suggestions came up on how to you know, get smaller lots and things like that. Did come up. Maybe you could use zone A. And uh, have, it's it's a three-acre zone, it could be reduced to two-acre zone or one or whatever. But it was defined by an arc, so in order to do that, we were also, the P O C D also suggesting a expanding zone A, and if that happened, we're out of this arc, and where do we stop? It's a uh, you know, it's like a perpetual motion thing, so uh, zone A right now is defined by an arc and no meets and bounds. However, everything in green here extends past the arc, so by definition of restrictive, zone A is defined by the most restrictive.
If you're.
Any part of it is in.
Piece of land. This piece right here, that little tiny triangle right there.
Right.
That makes that whole piece.
Actually, that other lot would be.
This is better one. Peter's is a better one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This little triangle right here.
They they get lots of mileage out of going from four acres. Just because they touch right here.
Right.
Yeah, right, that's what we say.
Peter and the hermit have this little tiny piece right here, and then it gates this whole big piece from three-acre zone. Zone A is three-acre zone. If we let this little piece control, that little piece is restrictive.
So you're saying lot 1949, right?
Oh, he's talking 1914.
1914, yeah.
That's 99 or more percent in zone A inside the arc.
But because it touches a more restrictive zone.
Because part of it is in.
Right there.
Isn't, and that's the one that overrides.
It contaminates the whole lot.
Well, doesn't contaminate. Don't be so.
Well, it does.
No, not necessarily.
It defaults. Can't somebody just?
It defaults to the more restricted.
Draw a line, draw a line around that arch and. Default, I said. I changed it to. Split the property into two properties.
So I'm a little lost. What happens to lot 1949?
Like, where's 1949?
See, 1949, right there. Yeah, because that.
Four acre.
Right now, that's, that's way inside, outside the arc.
Right, that's not even touching the arc.
I mean.
Well, touching the arc, a little bit, that little corner. That little quarter is green, right there.
That little corner right there.
No, 19. Yeah.
That's 23.
That's, yeah.
Twenty dash three.
That's a big piece of land.
Oh, was it 20 dash three? Oh, right, you're right. Okay, yeah.
All the way over to the barns.
Oh, my gosh.
Huge piece of land, so if we let something control other than the most restrictive, that would be giving.
That becomes all.
Not sure it would make a lot of difference. That's just your opinion uh, on what it would would do for a zone change, uh, an acreage change in the zone, so. Zone A right now is very well defined. I suspect that most people in zone A don't know what we know about zone A. Uh, and they probably don't know that as long as they're yellow, they're three acres on, and if they're green, even though they're inside the arc, because the little restrictive pieces outside the arc, they're four acres on, zone C, it's on C. Yeah, so we can just leave it like it is. If we go to meets and bounds, why we don't have to go to meets and bounds if we have just the tax map? Is there any advantage?
So what you're saying, the green is no longer in zone A, just the yellow.
Right.
So we got it.
Green has never been zone A.
Yeah, that's true.
The green has never been zone A.
It's not in that circle?
No, see, because the property, that's, anything in green shows the property that also is in C. And because the.
Every one of those touches.
Every one of those in.
So you're not taking any rights away from people?
No.
Actually, didn't, didn't this area used to be three-acre zone and it was upzoned before?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And A used to be two-acre zone.
Okay, so everything goes up.
That doesn't mean we can't do something. I mean, if if things changed and the winds blew a different direction 10 years from now, we could bring this up again. If they, if the town wanted us to expand zone A, we could do it.
Yeah.
We'd have to go to meets and bounds then.
Um, so all the yellow is meets and bounds where you have it up there. The yellow altogether, the yellow.
In essence.
No, it's not. It's not meets and bounds. It's just trusting the the depiction of the tax map. There could be a, there could be a little flaw somewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't know. These aren't A2 survey. These are tax maps.
But all those greens that are gonna become zone C, they're already overruled by.
Or they are zone C.
Right.
They're in zone A, but they default to uh, zone C.
Thought it was real interesting, because I had this done, several different maps done through the housing plan steering committee because we needed this information. We're talking about some options for zone A, and um, so it was fascinating to have this and see how the circle actually represented zone A, and what part was in and what part was out. And then there's another map where it shows everything that extends, and you see that extends quite a bit. It's quite large.
Quite large, and it extends huge.
Yeah, I mean, this, and you can see the 20 dash three goes all the way.
Big, big three acres of.
Anything that touches, so, you know. That's why we're just showing this one.
So it's fairly straightforward, fairly easy to understand if you just understand what most restrictive piece is in the property. It's just a spec. It's, 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 it's restricted by the higher number of acreage required in zone.
What would be the benefit to the community to change it?
If we were, let's say, didn't the P O C D one time several years ago say that they wanted to expand this area?
I don't remember.
And we couldn't just take this arc and expand it again and create a whole lot of can of worms for other lots that are outside the zone. We'd really have to start doing meets and bounds and say, well, zone A is the end of Hemlock Road to 67.
Right.
And those are meets and bounds, using roads and rivers and stone walls. So if if that happened 20 years from now or whatever, later on, it can always be re- be revis- revisited.
Always.
Because if you do, where do you draw the lines? I mean, you, if you're gonna extend it, the town wants us to extend it for some reason. You know, years down the road, where do you extend it? To Crowfoot? And when you get to Crowfoot, do you have property on Crowfoot? Or Crowfoot being property north of Crowfoot is one zone and south of Crowfoot. That's the way it's done. Few years ago, I checked Easton and Old Lime, and that's the way they do it in Easton.
Yeah, the road, one side.
Beer's Road and Easton, yeah. Uh, it's a one-acre zone south of Beer's Road and two-acre zone north of Beer's Road. That has to do with basically with city water back there. So, but, but if you're gonna, you know, it's, it's a little bit old and archaic. The whole United States is done, needs to be, all done with meets and bounds and.
I'm sure we're not the only ones that still have a circle, but, you know.
Anyway.
But no one, I don't think anyone's gonna pick this monument up and move it anytime soon. That was my comment. The reason why they changed it in the seventeen hundreds, I was, I love that story, but picking it up.
One dark night.
Yeah.
So we can just not even table this anymore, we can decide to just forget about it. It wasn't necessary, we thought we were gonna expand and use roads. And now we, we've never really had this map to compare it to. And that says it all. So we can, say we're off the table, we can just dispose of this agenda item until it comes up again. This will be, these maps will be hanging around, I would think.
What was the change in acreage when you eliminated the green from A?
A does not any different. This is just, this, there's no difference in.
Because I, years ago, we got acreages somewhere around twelve hundred in zone A, the circle.
Oh, I see.
Twelve hundred. So some of that's becoming C. So how many acres is yellow?
Well, the, the stuff in that's green has always been in C.
It's, I'm talking the stuff that's in the circle.
No, no, I know, but.
Yes, you calculate the area of a circle, it's coming up with twelve hundred acres. But if, if we added up all the different lots.
I believe the circle is zone A.
Yeah, but the, in our regulations, it states that if.
Oh, I understand, I've heard that five hundred times.
Oh, all right.
I've heard that five hundred times.
Okay.
But there's a lot of other things that are incorporated in zone A over C. Not just building lots, there's some other stuff in there.
Other.
You can, we have to look and see that can be done in C and not done in A or whatever.
But I think it's about, isn't it about the property and how it's designated?
Building lots right now, size of the lot, three acres or four acres.
Right, but I think that statement in those regs that designates which zone you're in is the one, it's the leading.
So.
Statement.
The circle never meant anything.
Right.
But we've lived with it for, ever since zoning started.
We just never analyzed.
But the zoning, but the circle.
It just defines.
Defines the boundary.
Zone A.
Yeah.
And try to look for natural boundaries. And those are funny zones too, not to, just to digress. B, that's three acre zone, right?
Yes.
And it's based on the roads that drive through it are more accessible roads. And it's really not, it's way down the end of town.
Right, it's more your meets and bounds because it's Minor Bridge and South Street.
Yes, it is, that's right.
Lower River Road.
Yeah, that's true.
B.
That's Business District though, isn't it? Or is it B?
Nobody even knows why B, just like nobody knows why A is a circle.
It says topography in the definition. That's the connective. The only thing I know about it.
So Bill, what we're saying is, there is no specific or urgent benefit to changing this.
I, I don't think so. I think there's, it's, it's well defined by the word restrictive. And, and we have this map. This map could be proven wrong by one lot somewhere. If every one of these was A two surveyed, you might find a discrepancy and maybe one more touches outside. But for all practical purposes, this is pretty close to gospel, this finding zone A.
So we can make our changes within zone A without even doing away with the circle.
Right.
It's just that some people.
But everybody was.
Surprised.
Yeah.
Because, you know, like this piece of land here, that's a lot of land that's in the circle, but.
You could split that, you know, you could make that into two lots.
Yes.
It's a good point, Alan, yeah.
Yes.
Why not? If, if I owned that, I'd.
Yep.
Put a curved line out there.
That's, that's exactly right. You do get the A two survey and you split it, you have to go through subdivision.
Yeah, it's landlocked though.
Yeah.
Can't do that.
The one, a good example is, is nine thirty-six up on Cedar Ridge.
Eighteen one one nine is got land down.
The circle bisects it. It's a single lot now. But it could be two.
Yeah.
It's over six acres.
So.
This one right here.
You could.
Yeah, I'm sure there's several.
If you had a lot in zone A, it has never been cut, never had a cut. You're entitled to your first cut.
First cut rule.
Right? You go get an A two survey, you just go to the planning commission, it's a rubber stamp approval because it's a first cut. You're not creating non-conforming lots, you have two, two lots that conform to the zone. And you can do that. And if you did, isn't there a road touching this somewhere?
Yeah, down there to.
But let's, let's say this.
Sixty-seven.
Well, here, let's.
It's right there, right here, it's right there.
Oh, look at that, yeah.
So, but when you talk about your cut, if he wants to cut four acres off.
Yep.
He can't landlock, like you said. He's gotta have a road for the cutoff.
You need a road at the other end.
He's got the frontage of two fifty.
That big lot right there has only one frontage.
Right.
Yeah. If that was three hundred feet right there.
That he'd be able to do it.
You'd have fifty footer for a front lot and fifty for a back lot.
Right.
But he could cut that upper piece and sell it to twenty-seven dash seventeen, that's our.
Now you're talking like a developer.
That's our luck. So, but that's, that's, you know, I never thought of that, Alan, that's a good point because you can, therefore you.
Lot line.
You can take some of your land and put it in three acre zone. If you just had seven acres, it would really benefit because you could have two lots, a four acre lot for the zone.
See.
That's very good lot for zone A.
Yeah.
Provide you with the frontage and the proper survey and the minimum circle.
Right, that's, there's a lot of things that, that, you know, restrict it.
Yeah.
So.
You know, there's so many restrictions and I, I wrote them all down and mapped them all out. You know, the restrictions, it's almost like in this zone A, you don't even need to have acreage as a, as a definite, as a requirement. Because septic's twenty-five feet, seventy-five feet from wells and twenty-five feet from putting drains and within the setbacks and a minimum circle. And it's just not, you're septic in your well, you gotta figure out your neighbors just because you're seventy-five feet from a well on a septic system. Doesn't mean you are from a neighbor, so those are the real restrictive things when you start getting more dense.
But, but you have increased density in two other areas more so than in A. It appears as though in the upper left, you have nine forty-four all the way down. That's, that's what's a carriage lane or.
Yeah, and those, those wouldn't be.
No, carriage lane's not there.
Oh, no, up in the upper, it's white, it's all white.
Me way up here.
Go to the left, right there. Yep, nine forty-five, yep.
So those might be, you know, prior to the change.
Again on lower county.
Yeah.
But if he's talking about density, my point is that there is density in other locations.
Yeah.
All these lots are unbuildable too, also, because they're, it's grade right under, Jim, just past Jim Doyle's Best of Bad turn here. They're, yeah, they're not feasible, not that's in my opinion.
Yeah, no, right, so you can't.
No.
Well, there's, that's, what do they call that road down there? You can see the road go in and all those.
Oh, is it Evergreen?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, so those, I think those were done before, was that before it went to four acres? So they're probably three acres.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So those are three acres. Right? Yeah.
That goes way back.
I remember. What's the one where the road splits the lots?
Yes, yes.
What's the name of that road, that funny private road?
Evergreen.
Evergreen, oh, there's a funnier name, Loomack or something.
There's Lumba.
Lumba, yeah. There's never.
That's there, that's.
That was.
This is it right here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that a public road or a private?
That's a private road.
Okay, that's what I thought.
These are interesting things to throw around.
It's great having the maps, I mean.
Those taxpayers a lot of money for this map, twenty-six dollars. I haven't built them for you. You have a permit?
Thank you.
We're gonna talk about, yeah, we can still toss them, that was, Alan had a great point.
What's that? About the splitting?
Yeah, with a subdivision. And you could even do a subdivision. You just have to go through the whole process.
Yeah.
You didn't have first cut. All right.
Yeah.
Speak now, not going away. We got some nasty stuff to talk about next.
So you're, you're basically saying nothing's changing?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying, but I mean, are we gonna say that?
So if we wanna go to two acres in zone A instead of three to make smaller lots.
All yellow is affected and the green is.
Right.
Yeah.
Correct.
We have, we have the lots that are four acres, so you get two, two acre lots. We have those defined.
I actually have another map.
By, by a non-professional map.
One at a time.
Probably ninety-five percent.
I got maps.
Any, anyone that went through a change would have to get an A two survey anyway to confirm the compliance of.
Right.
zoning regulations. So.
Hey.
All right.
Circle's good for me.
Yeah, it's been there a long time.
You should all these maps.
Do you need to keep them?
Can I have this copy?
Sure, I'll take it.
Okay, good. It's actually real interesting to.
It's fascinating.
Yeah, it was good, I was able to update his map with.
Just pull that in.
Is that?
Well, it's interesting for me, it's why when they zoned Roxbury with four zones, you have A, B, C, and D.
Yeah.
Oh, we is square, that's right.
Yeah, and B is long, narrow, straight. Y is A a circle? Where'd they get that? Three quarters of a mile from the monument.
Maybe it's ancient, maybe it was the first.
It's an old, it, it is the original way in which they did it. So it's based on English system. They had a monument and then they just measured.
Yeah.
From there.
The city ratings.
Yeah, because there weren't that many roads.
Okay. So we got that over, that's too bad because I, I look forward to talking about it.
South Street.
Yeah.
Oh, South Street.
Well, if we ever get to discussing other things that we are going to allow in A, not in C, like housing options. You know, the, the smaller lot, only with a smaller house, possibly multifamily housing. So there's a lot of things you can do.
And we still can do it.
In the center of town.
We can still do it, we, we have no more restrictions now than we, than we had. Or just tabling this, it's still.
But I also wanna look at the one that says, now you had those big parcels of property, but Peter Hobbs.
Yeah.
Okay. And for that little corner that happens to be in C.
Tiny.
Okay, so maybe we should look into making some changes to that. So his land is more usable for a village district.
Was that the?
Peter Hobbs' big piece.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's really this, very fairly in zone A.
All of it, except for that little.
He can sell that piece to it.
There.
The deep holes have just, the exact opposite.
So based on percentage.
Yeah, something.
Some kind of percentage, and then that would change eighteen dash.
It would make zone A more usable to the community in the future for housing options.
Yeah.
We keep mulling it over. We, we made a determination right now.
Yeah.
We understand it much better.
Well, I, I think there's a disparity between housing options and village district. Because we, in, you know, I attend as many meetings as I can. Zone A, there's no way to create a village district with the intersection of two major highways. Especially with what we're faced with right now with the increase in traffic and, and whatnot. So changing and creating diverse housing is one thing, creating a village district.
Yeah, I see, I see as two separate things.
Take the village district right up. That's the word that Jocelyn kept using and Gail McTaggart kept using for years.
I've used that as a test going up north, like to Collinsville. And those are all wonderful village districts, they create walking patterns, they create.
So I think we just concentrate on how.
Pedestrians, we're not gonna have that unless we redesign our roads.
They scratch that diversified housing, multifamily housing, smaller housing. All of that in zone A, not the whole town, just in that zone A.
Well, that's a conversation that we will be having soon because that is.
I mean.
Or.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, that, that's a, yeah.
How soon, we don't know, but it's, it's down the road pretty close.
Yeah, I mean, with the things that are happening in the other towns.
Yep. And that's, if we, when we get done talking to this, before we go on to twenty-one twenty-nine, let's get, let's finish up with zone A. And we know it's not gone away. It's, therefore, we're up, up to speed on it with, with good thoughts. And, and calling it a village district or a zone A, you know, we have to tweak things along those lines, but. It exists, there it is.
Yeah, it's a circle.
And we know, we have a ba- basic premise of understanding that. All right.
Go from six lots to eight if you change the zone.
What's that?
Peter's lot.
Here's what, but, but then to do that, you have to get a road in.
Right, so that eats up some of that.
And, and the frontage on.
So it may go from six to seven.
But it may, it may only go to four because the road cost is so prohibitive. He just couldn't put a road in to.
So if he just did all road front lots?
And there'd only be like three, then the two road fronts and one back lot. So you'd have, and, and we, we talk about changing back lots to, what was it, a hundred fifty percent now? Or, you know, back lots are, for some arbitrary reason, we determined that back lots had to be half again the size of a front lot. Why? There's no reason, there's no reason at all.
That's the other change that could be left just for A, where the interior lots the same size as a front lot.
So you'd have to, there are things that have to happen, you know, setbacks will always be important, setbacks will be important. Road frontage can change and the minimum circle can change, but setbacks really need to be sacred. And then after setbacks, if the road frontage changes and the minimum circle changes, setbacks can, along with new town health. Can rule, can rule the potential of a lot.
Good.
All right. Sorry, that took so long, but that was fun, I enjoyed that. So let's go on to something Kim was alluding to, but really, we gotta discuss P A twenty-one twenty-nine, section one purpose. And before we do that, when I go to bed at night, this is T M I, is that what it's called, T M I? When I go to bed at night, I fall asleep in seven or eight seconds, I never have a problem on asleep. This morning at four fifty, I was awake this morning because mostly yesterday, I'm embarrassed to say, I was going over all this stuff. And I spent, I didn't go out of my house yesterday.
I saw that.
My truck never moved. And I woke up this morning at four fifty, I couldn't go back to sleep. So I made some notes. These are the notes that bring this one. So for the next couple of minutes, I'll try and make sense of this. Because what I think this, I think we need to do is we kinda need to, it's been a couple of months or more since we talked about, went through that list. We need to kind of realign our gyros to start out navigating again and just kinda have a review, a refresher conversation about just what twenty-one twenty-nine is. And eighty dash thirty G, all these things, I forgot what they were. So, you know, twenty-one twenty-nine, Public Act is, if you really see how it's incorporated and implemented, it's kinda dawning and overwhelming. From what the, what the state's asking us to do. if you really see how it's incorporated and implemented, it's kind of dawning and overwhelming from what the, what the state's asking us to do. Twenty-one, twenty-nine creeps into our regulations through uh, mandation, I, I don't know whether mandation's a word, but compulsion is. You know, twenty-one, twenty-nine comes into our, our town through mandates. And basically zoning boards are required to follow the state mandates now, but the mandates of the new laws, twenty-one, twenty-nine versus the thirty-year-old eighty, eight dash thirty G have conflicting objectives. And, and the towns are caught in the middle of these objectives from these two things in the state. The state's trying to, this is not a word I made up. It's trying to desegregate the state, make it all one zoning. I'm not all in favor of that, but it's, it's just, it's really becoming a model. It's really becoming a mess. And it's creating, you know, the town's being caught in the middle. It's creating hurdles of conflict that, that are making we as zoning commissioners trying to make us into a role of being incapable or in capacity, just hamstringing us. So, and you mentioned, you know, twenty-one, twenty-nine is not going away. That's what I wanted to say. I'm not advocating rolling over and playing dead, but we've got a big job ahead to deal with twenty-one, twenty-nine all the time. Because it's going to be here all the time. It's going to get bigger. So hurdles, I was thinking of hurdles that, that we know of right now. The hurdles that are happening to us with twenty-one, twenty-nine and also with our own regulations are, first of all, I was thinking of examples in town. Appeals, the woods up the road, for example. It was appealed by people that say, I'm aboard the boat now, pull up the ladder. I live here. Don't let who else live here. There were forty-one meetings relative to the woods. Hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars were spent by both, by both the parties. And, you know, large law zoning for single-family dwelling makes housing unaffordable, which it does. So it's really working against us when things like that happen. Another hurdle that we can have is ignoring regulations, wetlands. You know, Russ Garnet Road right now, they're ignoring cease and desist and what's that other word? Show cause. They're just ignoring.
Notice a violation.
Yeah, violations. And someone knows that is. Hilltop clearing. I know a hilltop got cleared and I was told that it's better to ask forgiveness than it is to ask permission. They were slapped with a three or six hundred dollar fine and bragged how they put it over on the town, the wetlands. You know, that's something that, you know, that's a hurdle that we come. Activity without permits. River Road, Shallabees Road, enforcement fines are insignificant. This is a delicate thing I'm going to say now. ZBA, ZBA put our three dash ten to a test. John mentioned it on his report.
And just say that, you're talking about the.
For non-conformity. Our non-conformity regulations are only a few months old. And they've been put to the test. The first test failed. We got, John denied it. We agonized over how to do that. It got denied. And the second one is being tested right now with Moosehorn and Grand Cava. So I'm not saying that by any means that ZBA is our enemy. I mean, with their, their, the ZBA are people just like us. They have the best attention to Roxbury, Roxbury in their hearts. But I think that you know, they're, they spend a lot of time redefining fence. Zoning's supposed to write the regulations, right? ZBA is supposed to determine hardships. I think that it'd be important for every year or so for ZBA and zoning to get together, have joint meetings to to, to bring them up to speed. I think, I think they get sidetracked. We're the ones that make the rules. We're the ones that make the rules with intentions, intent. And I don't think that when you didn't make the regulations, you don't always know what the intent was. So I think, you know, can we appeal other commissions? Jim, you, other commissions? Yeah. I'm talking about a friendly. Absolutely. Because I have, I have nothing bad to say about ZBA except that you know, i- it's a little problem we have because now we have to address regulations that we wrote that are flawed. Because does that regulation now have a foot in the door for the next applicant down the road?
Sets a precedent.
So do we write amendments to that regulation, for instance? So that's these are just things I, I think we should work closer with ZBA.
Well, the primary objection is that they didn't go through the proper channels to begin with. Correct?
The resident.
The resident did not go through the proper channels.
Yeah, no, doing things with no permit and just not worried about.
Permit after they started construction.
Correct.
John will tell you, they said to his face, we don't have permits. We were just told to go ahead with it without a permit. The contractor.
That's pretty, should be.
Somebody that's.
That case, a contractor's supposed to know and you could
Yeah.
Take, take, grab his license.
Yeah.
That would get his attention.
He even has a license.
And, and the second objection is that it is within the setback. Is that correct?
Oh, my God. It was within setbacks on town property. Under, underneath a dangerous curve.
But what is it? I mean, I live on River Road, so I've been watching that.
Yeah.
I, I was trying to figure it. Is it like an outdoor kitchen? What is that?
Garden wall.
It was a garden. I thought maybe it was an outdoor kitchen there constructed. I couldn't figure out what it was.
It was a wall put there.
For what purpose?
I guess privacy.
People come down well as bridges.
Solve it just by defining what the fences.
You know, they, ZBA spent their time. They spent a lot of good time analyzing fence. And they, they let it go.
Double fenced because there's already a fence. I don't know how you can. I mean, we don't need to go through the semantics, but I don't understand how that can be construed as a fence. That's all. How it can be tested? If I if I bought a parcel and I was building a new home and I decided to install a brick fence instead of a stone wall, would I be allowed to?
Yeah.
Exactly. There you go.
You can build a stone wall.
Not in a setback. Well, in a setback you can, but not in a.
Your fence?
You have light bulbs, shrubs and mailboxes and stone walls in the setback. It says, and, and including stone walls. But by saying including stone walls, it also tells you nothing else. They have brick, they have brick wall, plumbing and conduit. It's, it's water over the dam. You know, it's been, it's been denied or reapprived. And, and, and again, you know, I think that ZBA worked at a, works at a disadvantage because they have to kind of think about reading our minds when they make determinations. And they got, they spent a lot of time defining fence. And when they shouldn't have to, our regulations should have specifically addressed.
Yeah, but it's next to impossible to address every permutation that somebody's going to try to think of or every workaround that someone's going to. So we can do our best, but then, you know, something happens and I don't think any of us sitting at this table would have ever had the forethought of that. I, I just don't know.
But it's going to happen. And so what's the solution? The solution is to be aware. You know, be aware of twenty-nine, twenty-one, twenty is not going away. You know, that's, that's here to stay.
But I think the difficulty is we're two distinct bodies, right? So when we say, I mean, I, I agree that there could be some benefit meeting, discussing, et cetera, but the whole point is that we are two distinct bodies.
Meant to be that.
And it's meant to be that way.
Yes, but our, but our roles are two distinct roles.
Yes.
Correct, correct.
Ours is make the regulation, make them the best we can, and theirs is to.
Well, it's almost like they have the final say because they're the Board of Appeals, so.
They're the ultimate place to go.
Yeah, in my, in my experience.
We need a zoning Supreme Court.
That the ZBA has been, has eliminated a lot of their leverage over the decades. Does anybody agree with me? Before it was like, well, zoning's not good. Just go pass it on to ZBA, just rubber stamped it and passed it. I don't believe it's that way anymore. It's much more difficult to get through ZBA now than it used to be.
Yes.
It is.
It is.
Well, yeah, ZBA is doing their job, trying to do their job. And as we can't, as we can't write regulations that are inarguable and perfect, they can't determine their role in denying or carrying through with a dial or an approval. I mean, they do their best.
Well, I guess the concession was they had to take it from seven feet to six feet.
What's the definition of a fence?
Something dividing two pieces of property. I think that means it goes from border to border.
Because we worked over deer fences, pretty heavy.
Yeah.
We did, we changed some rigs on deer fencing.
Is that after Davenport? Rose to Devon.
About the same time, yeah.
Fences shall not obstruct visibility for motorists entering or leaving the site or driving in a public highway shall pose no other danger to public safety. No fence or wall or or combination thereof shall exceed six feet in height. When within the front side and rear setbacks areas stipulated in the master chart, shrubbery trees and hedges shall not be subject to the six-foot height requirement.
No fence or wall.
A wall, yeah, that's what it is.
And what do we do with deer fencing?
Says it, no fence or wall.
Deer fencing may be installed to a height that should exceed eight.
Says wall. Yeah, we did.
In setback.
No, in setback.
Deer fencing installed in a front yard shall meet the front yard setbacks as stipulated in the master chart, except deer fencing may be located on the side and rear yard property lines. So it has to meet the front setback, but it could be on the property line side of it.
I, I could be mistaken, but my perception is they came at that, they began that project as a patio, a garden seating area. And created that wall without permit. And now I feel that there, a compromise has been reached, even though they went about it the wrong way. They're still currently within adhering to our recs. Because all they did, all they achieved was building a wall, which will give them further protection from traffic to the house.
Light zone. Light, the traffic, headlights.
Yeah, whatever. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah.
They're not going to, that wall's not going to protect cars from cascading on the upwheels out of the fence and into their bargain.
Hard rail's supposed to do that.
That's a safety.
Or speed bumps. How are those done?
They're actually, I went over, I did test and I went over them at twenty-five and forty-five.
I've been testing them.
Yeah. And they, but I did do slow me down.
Well, just consciously knowing that there.
Next year, I'm going to try and talk to selection and see if they can put those speed bumps instead of straight across on an angle. So right now, when you go off the speed bumps, it's two bumps. If they're on an angle, it'd be four bumps.
Very annoying to everyone.
I just think they need another one.
What's that?
I was in Dominican Republic. You don't go with those. Three miles an hour. If you went over the twenty.
Anyway, we got to get on to, we have to get on to the section one, but I just want to say a couple of interesting things.
We getting invited to garden party. That's what I wanted to go to.
I'll see if your car. Did you read the thing about Washington? Attorney Siska made a present, he conducted a presentation on the implementation of twenty, twenty-one, twenty-nine in Washington? He had some interesting things. It's actually interesting to read. It's not as interesting as having a Guinness and having a nice night out, but it is interesting to read.
Yeah, so it was brought to my attention that this took place in Washington, so I asked for this to be attached. And what the nice thing was that, you know, here I am panicking, you know, about twenty-one dash twenty-nine going, oh my God, we have so much to do. And then I realized that we have already done things that they haven't done yet, you know? You know, so I went, okay. Let's be realistic. We are complete with character. We've already done the definition. They haven't even started that. And, and so, you know, as I would suggest, I think it's a, it's a good read. It's not too long. And it does give some good background on the regulation. And some things to look forward that we look ahead to. But I thought it was a, a very interesting.
Well, page nine.
This is, it's attached, it's after the maps on the stuff that. And.
Second to the last.
A second to the last.
I think it was longer. I think it was back and forth.
Yeah, yeah. So it's good, I think, for us going forward. So if we're going to talk about section one.
Yeah, but just what we do.
Okay.
I just saw a few interesting things in that. They were discussing floating zone and overlay zone, which you mentioned. And they've just specified this spot zoning is illegal, which we all know. However, an overlay or floating zone is only considered spot zoning if it's the, the size is small. Well, how.
Yeah, one parcel, I think, right?
How big is small?
I know.
There's no guidance on small.
The way Gail explained to me, spot zoning is just one parcel.
One parcel.
That you allow this one lot to build a duplex and not the rest of them.
Right, but if you, they were saying that if you took a floating overlay and made it small, it would be spot, it would be a spot zoning. But if you take, if it's bigger, it's not spot zoning, it covers a bigger area. But they didn't give us any guidance. And you talked about being subjective, Cheryl. Physical site characteristics, same thing. It refers to area, the area, characteristics of the area and protection of the neighbors and neighborhood. Well, how big is the area? What defines neighbors?
Yeah.
So. Physical site characteristics. And they want us to be objective. But how, there's no way you can be objective. You got to be subjective. You know, objective is something you observe. And we need guidance. How do we, how do we how do we act objectively when we're dealing subjective? So those are just hurdles down the road. I read there that twenty-one, twenty-nine, now if you have a building lot in town in Roxbury and if it supports a regular home, you can put a mobile home on there. From twenty-one, twenty-nine. You can have a daycare center. I can open a daycare center next to you. Or I can put a mobile home as an accessory building on my lot and you're going to be looking at it. And you came into Roxbury, paid a lot of money for your property.
Yeah, I don't think.
If the, if the lot supports a single-family home, you can be allowed to utilize a mobile home. It doesn't say as accessory housing.
That, your, your program, I, I, I didn't make that up, but I was just trying to get an example.
I don't think we got there for yet.
If it supports, you're right, exactly right. That's how it says. If it supports a dwelling, the dwelling can be a mobile home. Wheels or not wheels. A fabricated building, they got you right.
We can go through that in more detail. We had to look at that. I need to.
Because it's a minimum size.
Right, there's a minimum size and those, or how those houses, you know, they have to support that minimum square footage.
Oh, sure.
So.
They do.
And some of them don't.
They have to support everything of regular dwelling.
Right.
Support. The last thing I saw is all of us are going to have to take a four-hour course.
Yes.
By January twenty-fourth.
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four. Okay. So Kim and I were talking, enough of that. Kim and I were talking about.
Zonings, it's a, a training, zoning training, yeah.
Might be interesting, but they don't have any course.
Sensitivity training.
No, they don't have anything. It's supposed to be through the state, but the state doesn't have it organized yet.
I get questions. She has kept abreast of Washington's activity. Has anybody here connected with any of our neighboring towns to see where they are?
No, not yet.
I don't think Bridgewater's thinking about it.
I think they.
Go to a bigger town.
I think they elected to not go with it.
Yeah.
To just forget, just thumb their nose at it all.
Yes.
There were quite a few towns. There was an article in the Waterbury.
According to the zoning office.
That was a good article.
And a lot of, out of.
And which of the Waterbury?
Yeah, but I gave it to Bill. It was about six weeks ago. And it said something like out of the hundred and sixty-nine towns, only half are doing that housing plan thing.
Oh, I don't know if it was there or half they were doing it or whether they hadn't, just hadn't finished it.
They, they were ignoring.
Ignoring it? Interesting.
Well, there's mixed comments. As I said, I've talked to a number of people, but continue to say the initiative is really intended for densely populous urban areas. And that the, the state understands that we're not all. And that, that the state understands that we're not all.
Right.
All of, so. I believe that we're moving in the right direction by showing that we are making changes. Toward this, but I don't think there should be a fire under us either.
Cause a lot of these things are going to be years and years and years, decades to where we become a densely populated town. And.
I don't think we ever will.
No, but it's going to be a long time.
Because Bridgewater has a, you have to have. The lot size plus fifty percent to have an accessory dwelling. And. That goes against, so if you're in a three acre zone, you have to have a four, you have to have four and a half acres to have an accessory dwelling.
Oh.
So it's six acres.
And they're not changing it.
Right.
In, in what, in twenty-one, twenty-nine?
No, just a.
Bridgewater.
A Bridgewater zoning.
Oh, Bridgewater's, okay. What is that again?
They, they have a requirement for accessory, to allow an accessory dwelling. You have to have one and a half times the local zoning. To be able to, to be allowed to have.
So they have a three acre lot, then they have to have four and a half acres.
If you're in a three acre zone, you have to have four and a half acres to have an accessory dwelling.
Um. All right, so we tried to go through this a couple of meetings ago, check this off and propose for Gail's proposals for, uh. Public, uh, for section one. Purpose. And we went through quite a few and checked them off, did we not?
Yeah.
Those characters?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we stopped at one point, three point nineteen, but those last four, we really did do too much in a way of.
Yeah, we got kind of tired about all that.
But, uh. That's sort of what, that's, that was our stopping point.
If I may, I'm going to interject here because I just, had just gotten a message from, uh, Gail McTiger. Were coming in, so. Um. She didn't have a lot of, had time. I missed the call, so, but she left a detailed message, as you can imagine. Uh. So my question to her was about. Section one and anywhere in it says to provide, uh, to provide, to promote, to allow. To consider. To consider, all right, so all of that having to do with housing, et cetera. And I asked, does our, now our new. Housing plan. Take care of that? She said yes.
True.
So because we have the housing plan. We can state that we are providing, we are. We are, we are allowing, we are moving forward. And so I, I got confirmation on that.
That's great.
That was, that was huge. So I think that's really, really important. This is why we went through and did the plan.
With that in mind.
Yeah.
What do we do with this now?
Well, I think that. Section one references. The requirements that the state sets out for zoning. And we have to have section one because it defines the balance of our regulations. So these items that she has in here are required. We are required to have them. We can't just say, no, I'm not going to have that one.
So what we can just say without reading is right now. So let's approve these. Is that what she said?
Well.
It sort of sounds like a blanket. It's blanket permission to do that.
It, it is pretty much. So the one question that we had, because we were talking about it. And it was, um. It was one point, three point twenty. So I don't know if you guys, it's on, should we have that? I'm going to read it out loud. To allow for the development of housing, which will meet the housing needs identified in the state's consolidated plan. For housing and community development prepared pursuant to section eight dash. Thirty-seven T of the general statutes and in the housing com- uh, component and the other components of the state plan of conservation development. Prepared pursuant to section sixteen A dash twenty-six of the general statutes. So we were like, I was like, what the heck is that? And so she very quickly. Also left me that voicemail of what that meant. It's like, it's a tiered system. So there's the state POCD, there's a regional POCD, there's the town POCD. And ultimately it's the state that is the one that's in charge. And it's just stating. It's just stating that there's an order to things and that these are the things, this is what we have to. Just know about. And she said that she will get us a copy of that, but it doesn't matter because this is the order that we have to follow. So this.
She's laying out the hierarchy.
She's just laying out the hierarchy in essence. So I was like, oh, and. Okay, but I don't know. I'll be honest. I tell you, I don't know what. Eight dash thirty-seven T says for sixteen A dash twenty-six.
I printed them up.
So I don't know what they state. Not that I have to be an expert on everything.
I, I looked them up and printed them up and, uh. They don't really mean anything.
No, I, I think it's just really an order. I think she's just, she just stated that this is the order in which the regulations go and.
It's a couple of different relabeling. That's all it is.
It's just something that had to be written.
He didn't sleep it off.
So I, I, that was good then. I was listening to my phone as I was driving to parking lot. So I went, oh my God, this is really important.
So we can, uh. According to Gil, we can just approve these things. And red.
Yeah.
And. We don't have to vote on them tonight. We can say we approve them. And wait to hold them off till the next meeting, then decide to have a public hearing. We can agree and then we can change our minds over the next month if we didn't like what we thought today.
Yeah.
Uh, and also.
Or continue it. Does it continue?
Continue, yeah.
If we sign this off.
Table means you haven't discussed it at all.
If we sign this thing off right now, at a public hearing tonight, this became our section one.
Yeah.
We can amend it.
Of course we can.
So.
We don't want to have to bother with that for a long time.
Well, we could if we found we made a mistake.
Yeah.
It's kind of just giving the can down the road a little bit.
Yeah, we'd, we'd like to.
A little bit, yeah. Like to keep it for a while. We can keep it for a while, but you know, I've only caught up to everyone else.
So.
I'm an alternate. I can't.
You can put your two cents worth.
I think he's looking for me to.
I was going to look at everyone. So do we just table this till the next time and? Next time?
We continue it.
Table, you can continue it.
You continue it.
There's no rush.
Yeah, there, there isn't a rush. I mean, we can, uh. Oh. Yeah.
The rushes is going to snowball. Twenty-one, twenty-nine, that's, it's not going away.
Right.
It's going to keep.
But this is pretty straightforward. Everything she has, once I, I read through it all and went, okay, so really the big question for me is what she answered tonight. Was the promote the blah, 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 going, ah, we did it. That was huge. So I. Really felt much better.
To clarify, you're saying that our actions to date. Are answering the requirements.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
So, we're going to table this.
I just want to clarify.
Continue.
We're going to table this.
Continue.
To continue.
Continue.
As we talked about it.
Yeah, tableing means we didn't talk about it. That's what she just educated.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear that.
We had a continuous.
We're going to continue. Do you need to vote on that?
Nope.
We're going to continue it.
You can continue it.
I think that's good.
All right, we talked about the town of Washington meeting. That was nice. That was free. That lawyer didn't cost us a thing.
I know.
I like that.
He is one of the best.
He's come here.
How has he?
Yeah, he does what's legal. Legal requirements, right? He writes the book.
He's very.
And the last thing.
He's the guru.
Okay.
This, this guy that writes, this guy Byrne that writes the Connecticut Federation of Planting and Zoning Agencies. There's some pretty interesting articles in, in this.
Yeah, I thought that was.
Yeah, and, uh, there always seems to be something that relates to us.
Yeah, we didn't get it.
Or we did.
Do we get that?
Yeah, it was attached.
Got it. Thank you. The last, it's like twenty-five through twenty-nine or something.
Got it.
I brought copies of that older one too, if we wanted.
The one that I.
Distributed.
Got my attention.
Yeah, yeah. It was back in twenty-one, but it had all.
It's actually quite good.
Yeah. So if anyone wants a copy, I have them tonight.
Oh, of this one?
Of the twenty-one.
Let me see the one for a second here. I won't, I won't keep it.